Hello everyone. Tenaka To Katoa. Thanks for coming along to this Squeeze online meetup for councils. I'm Patrick Fitzgerald, Squeeze's sector lead for local government. I'm here to welcome you, let you know how today's session will run and introduce our speakers. One of the things I like about working in your sector is councils' willingness to share and learn from each other. We work with over 100 councils of all sizes in Australia and New Zealand, and mainly larger city councils in the UK and North America. A question I get asked a lot is what are other councils using Squeeze technology doing? The answer, of course, is plenty and more than we can keep track of. I'd like to give a shout out to Deb Webb from Selwyn District Council, who suggested that we run meetups just for councils to provide a way for you guys to share your new projects and initiatives. And here we are. So there's just a few housekeeping points before we kick off. And bear with me while I find... While I try and change the slides. Please be aware that we are recording Jason's session and we'll share the link to the video recording with you and we'll post it on our website. If you'd like to ask a question, please type it into the QA tab and we'll get it into the QA session at the end of Jason's presentation. As this is our first meetup for councils in this format and something of an experiment, we're keen to get your feedback. So we'll email you a feedback form and really appreciate your thoughts and suggestions. Moving on to today's agenda. We first up is Jason Turnbull from Wollongong City Council. Wollongong brands itself the city of innovation. So it's fitting that their recent website redesign pushed the boundaries a bit, making website visitors self-assign to one of three audience segments for a more streamlined, task-focused user experience. Jason's presentation will take about 15 minutes and then we'll have some QA time for up to 10 minutes. And if you'd like to stay on for five minutes after that, Anisa and Ang from our new customer success team will tell you how they can help you master your Squeeze technology and do more for your community. So now it's my pleasure to introduce Jason Turnbull. Jason's current role is solutions analyst and developer at Wollongong City Council, where he's had seven years' experience in web and leadership roles. He's previously worked in the consultancy specializing in portals and collaboration and has several interesting degrees. So Jason, thanks for agreeing to present today and I'll hand over to you.
Thanks, Pat. So yeah, we embarked upon our website journey, well, quite a long time ago, which I'll get back into. But essentially last year, about a little more than 12 months ago, we launched our new website. And it's been going great, going great gun since then. And I think today I'll basically talk a little bit about where we were and the journey we went on to get where we are now and why we did some of the things we did. First of all, a little bit about myself. As Pat said, my name's Jason and I've been with council now for coming up to eight years. And I embarked upon my technology journey reasonably late in life. I was always interested in tech, but I predate the internet as hard as it may be believed. So I came out of school, did a course in computers and then thought, hmm, that sounds a little boring to do for the rest of my life. So then I decided to embark upon a music career because there's so much money in that. So in a previous life, I was in a group called the Ten Tenors. Pat, show them the photos. There we go. So I did this for about 10 years. And eventually, you know, touring around the world and cavorting around on the stage like a fool, had its time, settled down, got married, had a kid and thought, what am I going to do now? So that's about the point I dived back into tech for my career. And I basically kicked off my tech journey as a front-end web developer, which then led to becoming a SharePoint administrator. SharePoint led me to a job at KPMG in Sydney. And but of course, I was living in Wollongong and the commute every day was an experience, but not one I wanted to continue forever. So eventually I landed at Wollongong City Council, who were also just a 100% SharePoint shop at the time. And then we, so we had our Intranet and our websites all in SharePoint, SharePoint 2010 at the time. But we kind of decided, oh, hang on, Pat, next slide. There's Wollongong right there, in case you didn't know. So about an hour west, south of Sydney. We've got an interesting shaped LGA, as you can see, which causes our developers and those sort of people a lot of pain. Our mapping guys love it. So Wollongong is, you know, about 200-odd thousand people. And I traditionally have always said that we had an aging population, but that doesn't seem to be as true anymore. We're pretty much bang in the middle in terms of demographics. And what we found is that our older generation actually liked getting into their technology more than we expected, but I'll get more onto that later. So bump us to the next slide, Pat, because I want to talk a bit about our old website. This is what it used to look like. Now, the images have kind of stretched a little, but what I was trying to demonstrate here was the one on the left is the mobile view, which if you imagine on a mobile screen, effectively the old site was SharePoint 2010. It had been upgraded from SharePoint 2007. It was not responsive. It looked, it basically turned into a postage stamp website when you looked at it on a mobile phone. The search, it had all the hallmarks of an old site. It was probably, I think about 2008, 2009, when this version of the site was launched. And so I joined council in 2013 and we started talking about upgrading the website in 2015. But then, of course, the whole spate of mergers occurred around New South Wales and we got caught up in that. So of course, everything got put on hold and our already old-ish kind of website sat there for another year or so because we couldn't touch it. In the meantime, we were trying to run up merged websites. In the end, our merger fell through. So then we turned around and sort of jumped back into trying to fix up this and working out which way we needed to go. We needed it, we knew we needed it to be responsive. We knew we needed it to be, have a better search, you know, you name it, we needed to fix it. It was just old. But part of the problem with this site is that we got here because it was built by council people who thought about it in a council way. And this was one of the first lessons we kind of tried to learn from ourselves was if we build a website for ourselves, we'll be able to use it, it'll make sense to us. But we're not the primary users of the website, our constituents or constituents, our customers are. So that's when we decided to go out and do some community engagement. So new slide, please. There we go. We actually engaged with an external company to do this because we thought it's a pretty big job and we don't really have any of that sort of skill in-house. So we thought, let's actually pay someone to do it properly. And we ran a bunch of engagement sessions, we got volunteers, we did surveys. And as you could imagine, a lot of it was confirming assumptions, but it gave us the, for want of a better word, ammunition to make decisions. And if those decisions were challenged, we had, you know, evidence in black and white to back it up. You know, there's certain things we already knew. We know that council is a lot of different things under one umbrella. And they all tend to operate, well, in an ideal world, they wouldn't operate as independently as they do. But back in 2016, 2017, that's how it was for us. There was a lot of siloing. We're a grudge purchase. People don't have a choice when they want to do certain things in the community. They have to come through council. That doesn't mean it has to be a bad experience. So we went out, we got this feedback, no real surprises. Like I said, confirming a lot of assumptions in that finding information was difficult. The search was pretty rubbish. And part of the reason the search was rubbish was not because the search in itself was bad, was because we had a real fear of deleting anything. So in the end, the website kind of was this dumping ground for documents going back, well, for as long as the site had been around. And that just cluttered up the search. We kind of, you know, the marketing company took all that away. And they came back and said, well, how about you split your site up into, into different chunks? They did this persona experiment with us. And we'd seen other councils have a crack at this as well. Really, the navigation on our old site was just all over the shop. It was too deep, it was too much to choose from, the homepage was very cluttered. So the idea was, we distilled that down into three main personas. We had residents, visitors and businesses. And the idea being that we could try and make their world a bit smaller in the website. We could try and make it so that if you came in as a resident, you didn't have to see stuff about DAs and stuff about policies and approvals and, you know, restaurant licensing and all that sort of stuff. And if you came in as a visitor, you really just wanted to focus on the tourist aspect of it. And if you came in as a business owner, you wanted to focus on your approvals and your registrations and all the policies you needed to adhere to. And the point of all that was to make the web experience lighter and slicker and smoother for everybody. So it was a bit of an experiment. It did, we did have to do a bit of fast talking to convince some people to get on board with that, which is why, as I mentioned earlier, having the evidence from our research, from our community engagement was very, very valuable when we were trying to convince executive and council themselves that this was the good way to go. So, what section am I up to now? Excuse me while I just recap. Next slide, please, Pat, that might drop my memory. Oh, here we go, project goals, yes. So obviously, we had some pretty easy, there was a lot of hanging fruit. When you've got a website that's coming up to 10 years old, it's pretty easy to improve it. Reducing the design clutter, making it more responsive, getting it WK compliant, which would have been nearly impossible in SharePoint, we did actually have a crack at it. Making it accessible for screen readers was a big part, a big emphasis for us and certainly found that a lot easier to do. You know, design aspects of coloring and font sizing and readability. Our readability, you may not be surprised to hear on the old website, was at about grade 18 or university level. And obviously, we're shooting for grade eight sort of reading level. So we knew that a big part of this was actually not actually about the technology. A big part of this was about the content. And I'll get back onto that a bit later on, but content, rewriting the content was the biggest factor in improving the readability, obviously, but also improving the search. Obviously, funnelback is a great search engine, but we also have a much cleaner content base now. We wanted to improve our bounce rate and I think probably a lot of the reason we had, I think we had a bounce rate, I've got some stats later on, but I'm just going to skip in my notes. Yeah, we had a bounce rate of about 40%, which isn't ridiculous, but we think a lot of that was probably because it looked so bad on a mobile site that if you tried to hit it on your phone, you would just leave because you couldn't navigate it, you couldn't find anything. And we wanted to increase the web traffic as a way of decreasing our customer service phone calls. And that one's a bit trickier to measure. We have tried to get some stats on that and to this point, I haven't because at the same time, not long after we launched our new website, we also launched a new customer service system. And of course, it got very messy. And the other thing about our beloved SharePoint site is that it wasn't particularly easy to use for content editors. It required a short amount of training, but it was a kind of system that if you didn't use it every day, you would very quickly get lost in it. And so that was definitely a barrier to keeping our old website updated and clean and usable, was the fact that it just was so hard to handle. It didn't help that it was old technology, but I think our experience with the Squeeze is system is that that has not been a problem at all in that training has been easy and everyone we have put in front of this new website in terms of entering in content has loved it. Having said that, they were coming from SharePoint. So it wasn't a particularly high bar, but the Squeeze platform is quite easy to use and it's just logical in a way that good old Microsoft sometimes is not. Next slide, please, Pat. So where have we ended up? Well, I mentioned trying to increase usage. We did increase usage up by 10.9%. I think the audience segmentation has worked. The, it's really hard to sort of measure that and probably what we should do at some point is go back out to the community and sort of say, hey, what do you think? I can tell you that the resident sort of view is by far and away the biggest one, which is not surprising, 68% of our users hitting the resident one, about 16% on the visitor and about the same 16% on business, which is not surprising. Some councils probably might push the tourist side of it. We've got different organizations that sort of do that. So our particular council in Wollongong doesn't really sort of push the tourism aspect of things too much themselves, which is another reason why we decided to split it out. In terms of our increase, yeah, I mean, whether that correlates to an increase in, a decrease in customer service calls, I'm not 100% sure. I mean, I'd like to think it does. We'd have to see some hard stats on that. It certainly does mean that you would have to argue that having a new site has improved the experience for residents because why else would there be an uptake in usage? I think the old site was just so hard to use that people just didn't, they just avoided it. Our bounce rate was a good win for us. We knocked that back from 38.8% to 17%, which is a pretty significant chunk. And I think once again, it's probably a correlation with our mobility usage. But also just the fact that it's easy to use. Mobility usage up once again because of the responsive design, because it's minimal design, looks cleaner, it's easy to use. And you can see that's backed up by the fact that desktop and tablet usage is down. People basically want to use their handheld devices and we've made that a lot easier to do. The reading level, yeah, at launch it was grade eight. It's slightly increased since then. And partially, that's because of, there's just some stuff in council you can't avoid being a bit, well, council-y. Business paper is a big one. And it's interesting, our search results were really, really super clean, right up to the point where we included business papers in the search results and then everything just went. So that was something that, you know, it's hard to avoid that sort of stuff. Yeah, and as I mentioned before, everyone we talked to about it, you know, just a bit of ad hoc sort of general feedback is that it's really easy to use, staff love it because it's not SharePoint, but also because they can just use it and if things make sense. As in a person who's maintaining that site and troubleshooting it, I love it because of the same reason, it's just logical. And as an administrator, when I crack open that backend and I need to sort of tweak something or add a feature or fix something up, it's easy to use, it just all makes sense. And to that end, actually, our lead content developer, our content writer, has actually picked up a lot of tech skills in the process. So I don't get involved in it much anymore because our content author herself has skilled up on the technology she needs to be able to expand the website and build out her new sites. Next slide, please, Pat. Oh, yes, Captain Hindsight. I mentioned business papers before. In hindsight, we tried to include those. We, we had a requirement, or we thought we had a requirement, that the business papers be sortable by date. Partially, that was because we had, we were uploading expanded business papers. And look, at this point, I will say that when we do our research on this, we find that a lot of councils actually use Infocouncil or some other service to completely split their business papers out because they are a pain. And for us, they're a massive pain because we didn't have consolidated business papers. So every council meeting and briefing session had like upwards of 10, 15, 20 documents. It was a nightmare. Not long after we launched the website, as would happen, we got a new manager of the corporate services area and they decided amongst themselves that we didn't want to do that anymore, we wanted to consolidate business papers. And lo and behold, now every business meeting, every council meeting only has two or three documents. Well, suddenly, the requirement to sort by date and filter by date was not a massively high priority. But to go back a step, when we launched, we had this problem, we went to Squeeze, we say, hey, Squeeze, we want to be able to sort and filter all these business papers by date. And the solution was to run up a separate search in funnelback to handle just the business papers. But what that meant was that when they were typically corporate services, and this is a process issue, corporate services would want to jump in and dump a business paper, a briefing or documents required for the meeting, and they need to be up. There's a legislative requirement, they need to be up a certain number of days or hours before the session. And I was throwing them in there and then because it was on a separate search crawl, because of this date search, they weren't coming up. And then, so we had to try and tweak that search call to run at a certain time of the week to try and match the process when they were updating the business papers. And then they want to make changes and we'd have to run the crawl again. And basically, we just overcomplicated it. In the end, what we did was really break that back and simplify it to just having the business papers in as a normal document and a normal search page. And lo and behold, everything worked beautifully after that. We didn't have any trouble with updating documents because they were there live straight away. We didn't have to run a separate search. And so the lesson learned from there was, don't make it any more complicated than it needs to be. But having said that, this is hindsight, we thought we had a requirement, turned out we didn't. I mentioned content approval and rewriting before. And we flagged this right at the beginning of the project. Now, we started, like I said, we talked about it in 2015. We got approval for it in 2016, I think we did the audience engagement stuff around 2017, started the build 2018. And we had a, we originally had a launch of April 2019, we ended up launching August 2019, which isn't too bad considering all the other things that happened in the meantime, which I won't go into now. But in 2017, we identified that content was going to be what slowed us down. We weren't worried about the technology. You know, we'd gone through our full tender process and had everyone, you know, throw their ideas up and we chose Squeeze and it was great. We knew content was going to be the problem and it was. Content right up until the very time we launched was what was slowing us down. Getting the right people in the room to tell us what the content needed to be and then getting the other right people in the room to approve that content and keeping that process running. It dragged, there's just a lot of content. So I don't know how you would streamline that. Whether you have, like allocating more resources would probably do it. We had one content author who was amazing, but possibly that could have had more resourcing thrown at it. But, you know, it's hard, we're a medium-sized council in Wollongong. If we were smaller, we would outsource a lot more. If we were bigger, we'd have more resources. But we're kind of an awkward teenager, we straddle the middle and we have an awesome IT team and we have these in-house IT skills like in web design and development and that sort of thing that other councils don't have. But we don't have scads of resources lying around either, so you work with what you've got. The other fun thing we tried was to, because we did have those in-house skills with front-end web development, we thought, hey, we want to control our own website. We want to be able to jump in and tweak code and, you know, make new stuff and not have to run to squeeze every time, which is great in theory. And what it meant was we ran our own GitHub, we had our own controlled Git repository for the site, which is not normal for Squeeze. So I guess the takeaway for that is don't swim against the stream unless you've got a really, really good reason to. In the end, we restructured our IT team, our resourcing focus shifted. We've got a big Tech One project going that's absorbing all our other resources. We didn't have time to play around with the code in our Squeeze site anymore. And then we started rolling up other Squeeze sites. We've got three live now and two in development. And when we came to upgrade our core code, we just decided it was going to be easier to flip back to having a Git controlled by Squeeze, like every other Squeeze site does. So it was an interesting experiment, but in the end, the benefit wasn't realized because we just couldn't maintain the resourcing on that one. Next slide, please, Pat. Whoa, back one. Here we go. So as I said, we are building new sites in Squeeze. We've got three launched. We've got our core website, which is the big Kahuna that has the bulk of everything in it. But part of our process, we decided to carve out other sections. So we carved out the libraries, which is the second biggest section. And that launched in February and it launched on Valentine's Day. The first and so far only project that I have managed that launched on the date we picked. And that's testimony to this quiz team we're working with, we had a great project team and also the fact that we'd already had all the skills built in from building the core site and that the library site was obviously the second biggest, but still a much smaller animal. We then also launched the Botanic Gardens Squeeze website as a separate site. That was around April, I think, which is all fun and games. That got put on hold because we had to drop everything to respond to the pandemic, as I'm sure most of you did. And now we are currently in the process of trying to get the Memorial Gardens site launched and our leisure centers lot site. Now, as you can see from the screenshots I've put up here, they actually are built. Once again, I think Leisure Centers is lost in approval land and Memorial Gardens is waiting for deceased search sort of service is proving difficult in terms of laying a security certificate on top of it because now everything has to be secure. So that's where that's being held up. But our, as I said, too, our focus is now on our major system rebuild. All our systems are going to Tech One and that's kind of the thing that's happening right now. So the websites are ticking along in the background, but as I said before, I don't have to be hands-on with them anymore because our content author who's kind of running these now has the skills to actually build these websites, configure them, run up new modules and stuff like that. Our next actual mission involving Squeeze directly will be integration because we've got Tech One coming onboard, we want to integrate with that as soon as we can. Obviously, it's not quite the focus in the project plan right now. But our integration at the moment is Tech One pumps out CSVs and once a week, I manually upload them as CSV data sources into our website. And it works really well and it takes me about five minutes a week. But it'd be better if it was just a direct integration. So that's something that will, once we get resourcing, we'll put some time to that. So that's something that we'll, once we get resourcing, we'll put some time to that. And Pat, is there any more slides in my presentation? Or have I finished? It looks like I finished. I feel like I just dumped a whole bunch of information at everybody then, but I hope some of that makes sense.
Jason, thank you. Thank you very much indeed. Indeed, it did make sense. So we do actually have, we have some questions coming in. I'm actually going to jump to the second question. But I'll invite the first questionnaire, who is anonymous attendee, just if they could expand on their question a little, because the question is, when you say usage, what does this mean in a council context? Now, do you need a bit more information to answer that, Jason?
Yeah, I guess my question will be what, what point, what point are you referring to? What was I talking about? Because I'm not particularly coming up with a clear answer in my head for that one.
Yeah. Okay. So anonymous attendee, if you could just clarify that. So we'll move on to Dasha, who's asking, I'm interested in the publishing model of material on the website. Is this coordinated by individual units or teams in subject areas? Or does primary responsibility fall to a web or comms team?
Great question. Traditionally, in the old site, because it was so hard to publish in, it tended to be centralized. We had a web content request form and everything got funneled through that. When I say everything, most things got funneled through that. There's always the occasional staff member who took it upon themselves to skill up and run their own section. Sometimes that worked out for the best, sometimes it didn't. But typically, everything went through a centralized publishing. However, we made the decision moving into Squeeze that part of what we wanted this platform to do for us was enable us to decentralize publishing. And we've kind of done that and it's working because, as I said before, training people was easy and they can use it and they don't sort of freak out when they go back to it and have to figure it out. And I know that we've got the simple edit in Squeeze and some of our staff use simple edit. And some of our staff actually have admin access to do what they need to do. It really depends on the functionality. And when I say they've got admin access, it's not full-blown, they can see everything, admin access. We've got them cut back to certain sections of the site for their content. But also at a certain point, when you're going to have distributed publishing, you've got to trust people and typically assume that everyone wants to do the right thing and they do. So yeah, to answer your question more directly, it used to be centralized, but now it's dispersed. Now we tend to hand ownership over to the business to run their own web pages. With moderation in place, of course.
And Jason, Deb Webb asks a great question. How did you overcome, we cannot delete anything?
Yeah, changing people's minds is really difficult. If you've ever jumped into Facebook comments, you'll know what I mean. But I think we just kept ramming home the message every chance we could that it is not a storage service, it is a publishing service. We have a storage system, it's called HP Records Manager. Well, actually, we're about to be converting to whatever the technology one equivalent is, but don't use the website as your storage repository. Basically, if it's on the website, it should only be published. And the, the archiving status in Squeeze is proving quite handy for us because we can archive stuff and know that it's, you know, meant to be archived. And then we have a rolling process that someone goes in every now and then and just checks our high active, high activity areas for content. And anything that's been archived for a month gets pushed into trash and then it sits in trash until we purge trash. But the bottom line is if you lose something from the website, you should have your copy somewhere else. So once again, how do we achieve that? We just kept ramming that message home every chance we could. Education is the short answer, education, education, education.
Great. And Jenny asks, how long did it, sorry, one question before that. How did the website redevelopment affect website search? Was it reduced? And does the website search use funnelback?
Yes, we use funnelback. Was the search reduced? Good question, actually. It's really hard to compare. Our old search was running using Google Search, which was embedded into the site, which was just awful, but this, it's really hard to compare stats because the old search was so trash. Was search, is search been reduced? Yeah, honestly, I don't, don't know. I'd like to think so. We did a lot of, we spent a lot of time figuring out our information architecture. We did sticky notes on posters and we grouped things and we shifted content around. We understood that some content needed to actually be in two places for it to make sense. And that's another thing we liked about this Squeeze platform was that we could have that in our menu structure, that we could have one source for the content, but displayed in multiple locations. Because sometimes people look for things because that's where they think it should be, not because that's where it actually makes sense. We did a lot of stuff around, you know, in terms of search and content. You know, in council speak, it's a secondary dwelling, but no one outside of council calls it that. They call it a granny flat. You know, or a guest house, you know. No one calls it a cycle way, they call it a bike path. So whenever we could, we use natural language. In the search, we put keywords in so that when people search granny flat, they get bumped to the secondary dwellings page and they get the information they want. Yeah.
Okay. And as a clarification on the usage question. So I think it relates to web stats.
Increase of usage. Yeah, 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 sure. Let me look at my notes here just to give you a bit more of a solid answer on that. Yeah, the stats I've got here, basically, I would hazard a guess that someone's gone into Google Analytics or, and basically we had two and a half million odd page views in the previous year. And in the following year, in that same time period, a year later, we had 2.8. And then they've calculated that to be a 10% increase. So basically, we're talking about actual page views. And I don't know whether that's a cumulative page views across the whole site or it'll have to be, that sort of number to be true. So that's kind of the answer is page views according to Google Analytics over the space of a year. Yeah.
Okay. And from Jenny, how long did it take you to migrate the old website content to the new website? And did you get any contractor to rewrite the content?
We didn't have a contractor, we had an internal media comms staff member was basically seconded to the project. And they started work on the, the content rewrite pretty much as soon as we got approval for this, like even before we knew what technology we were going to use. They started rewriting content because we knew it was going to be a slow point. And so to answer your question about how long it took, and I'm going to dig through my memory here, but I reckon Bron probably started rewriting content, I would say late 2017. And, or started the process because it wasn't just a matter of just picking a page and starting to rewrite it, you had to collate everything and put it into the new sections and it was a whole big thing. Probably late 2017 and we launched in August 2019. And Bron probably stopped writing content around, I'd want to say June 2019, so because we were finalizing the site. And I mean, that, look, the, the peak of that would have been over 2018. So it was over, over a year. But there was a lead-up planning phase and there was a tapering off at the end when we were basically waiting for stragglers. So the bulk of it happened in 2018. So, yeah. And that was one person, but one person also bringing in staff members from their relative business areas as subject matter experts. Yep.
Thanks, Jason. And a couple more from Jenny. Do you need a web developer to set up the website at the beginning? Or did Squeeze do the design and hand over the website as a finished product?
We, we like to be a little bit different at Wollongong. So we did this project a little bit different too. I think, I don't know, Pat might back me up here, but the standard Squeeze model would be that you come in and say, this is what we want. And if you, if you want them to, Squeeze will do the design, build the website and then hand it over, give you training and away you go. We, as I said before, mid-sized council have got some teams and skills that other councils possibly don't have. We have our whole own graphic design team. And we've got our own web development team. So the combination of those two things meant we did our design in-house. And we did our, we've got our own web developers. We actually, two of us, myself and another council staff member, when the time come to start the build, we actually sat in the Squeeze offices on Kent Street in Sydney once a week and sat with the developers and worked with them so we could skill up rapidly on how Squeeze worked and what, how it was put together. And like I said, very different way of doing it and quite, I think, unique and only because we have those skills in-house. So in the end, within six months, you know, I kind of could take off and do part of the build. So the, the deal was Squeeze built 60% of our site, we took 40%. Squeeze did the heavy lifting and did the more complicated stuff. We built out pages and replicated things and, and did little tweaks and enhancements. What that's meant moving forward is that I can more quickly troubleshoot stuff when I'm going to Squeeze support, so I can tell them more specifically what's going on because I know a bit more about it. If there's things we want to replicate and reuse, we're more able to do that because we've had that experience. It's not stuff that anyone wouldn't pick up eventually if you, if you spent the time in there, but we just fast-tracked it by doing a bit of a co-build. So to answer your question, we, we did a bit of a hybrid approach. We brought the whole design. Squeeze cut that up, built it in, did the templates, built the more complicated functionality and then we ran with it and finished it off.
Great. Jason, there are five remaining questions. What say we try and crack, crack through them?
I might start getting quicker, quicker answers.
Right. You mentioned, how do you ensure all content owners are accountable for their own content, i.e. to maintain it?
Okay, we envisage that we would have a review date set as a bit of metadata on each page. And we do have a review date set. What we haven't quite finalized because time resourcing is having that review date attached to a trigger that basically pumps out a notification saying, hey, this page hasn't been reviewed. And that review date gets reset anytime the page is edited. So basically, the intent was that it'll be a review date that was set to six months or 12 months after the last time the page had been touched. It's not foolproof because you can update that by simply opening the page and changing one character. The page hasn't been reviewed, it's just been updated by one character. So there's, once again, it's education. You probably, in an ideal world, would have someone whose job it is to just keep that stuff running. We currently really don't. Bron is still driving the new website builds and the new content writing, but is not, that's not her official role. So you kind of almost need that webmaster type role in someone to actually keep an eye on it. So there's a, there's a couple of different approaches there, education, monitoring, having a review date, that sort of stuff. Yeah.
Okay. You mentioned moderation in your answer to the first question. How does that work? Is that a manual check by top-level admins? Or is there some sort of notification that you get to check content before it's published?
Yeah, there's a content approval workflow built into Squeeze. So basically, we don't apply it to all the content because not all the content gets edited by our staff members. But on the content we do have that applied to, they can't make it go live. They can only make it approved to go live or request approval to go live. You select that status in the page when you're editing it, that triggers an email to whoever the moderator is set to or an email group. And they get that notification, I get them as well. And then they basically review it and hit go live. Now, look, typically, that person's got to have time to read all that content and depending on how much is coming through, it might just be a tick and flick. So the mechanism is there, how well it gets used, how effective it is, is all up to how much resourcing you've got to pour into it. But from a technical perspective, it's an approval workflow. Yeah.
And from Aiden, how do you achieve the one source for documents?
One source for documents. Might need some clarity about that one.
Okay, Aiden, could you maybe come back and clarify that? In the meantime, we'll move on to a question on language. You mentioned the challenges around readability and content not being written for your audiences. How did you navigate this and how do you maintain this when new content is curated for the website?
Yeah, education, 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 because there's some stuff you can't, there's no technical solution for that, which is probably the point you're getting to is that when it comes to readability and that sort of thing, you've got to basically train people to not write that way. Don't write in councilese, write, write in human and write. We have, one of our southern suburbs down here is Dapto. And we've got this character, Wayno from Dapto. You've got to be able to write it so that Wayno from Dapto can understand it. If Wayno from Dapto can't understand it, you've gone too far. It's not achievable on all council content, but that's what we're shooting for. And when we were doing the content approval, that was part of the education piece. It's like Bron would rewrite their content and go, right, here's how I've rewritten it, here's why I've rewritten it, you need to follow that.
Right. What has the feedback been like for the resident, visitor and business segments?
Look, I'm not aware of any direct feedback on it. Like, I'm looking at the other stats on the site and looking at our increased usage and that sort of thing. I can only assume it's positive. Like I said, the breakdown is about 70, 15, 15 across the three percent usage. We really need to run some surveys to get some good feedback on that. There might be some anecdotal evidence out there. I think, once again, we were coming from such an old outdated website that we did some focus groups before we launched and we wanted to test it with some vision impaired people. We did a pretty broad cross-section of the, of the community. And they were just so blown away that we'd even thought about them at all. But the fact that we've got this shiny new website and when you basically come to a website, you can go there yourselves. The first screen you see is a splash screen that says resident, visitor, business. And it explains why, if you want to know how, and you can skip that, it'll default you to resident, which was where the bulk of the content is. But everyone who's, like, if you're a business owner and you've got your own tab, you can click on from the start and you know that you're getting curated content that's just for you. I can't help but think that's got to be kind of, you feel a little bit more taken care of, a little bit cared for. So I'm totally making that up. That's just my take on it. I don't have any solid stats on that, but I'd have to say positive. Yeah.
Okay. And Jason, last question. It's the one, the one version, one clarified. You mentioned having one version of the documents throughout the website. How did you enforce this? As with you guys, we also have had multiple versions of the same document in multiple places.
Yeah, look, I think the honest answer is sometimes it's just the nature of an older website. They get woody. It's like a garden. They, they will get overgrown and they get messy and things get put in places they're not meant to be. The fact that the way Squeeze works with how it organizes assets in the tree means that it happens less because it's really clear. You can see the whole tree at once. We've got our pages separated from our documents, so we've got all our document folders down the bottom. Meaning that if you're coming in as someone who just needs to upload the document, you don't even need to touch all the website stuff. You just need to go straight to your folder and drop in. So when our HR staff are updating PDFs for job descriptions and stuff like that, they know they go to this folder and they go to that folder and they drop it in there and they make it go live and they're done. It's a really simple process for them. And so I guess that probably to answer your question, that's, that's how we, we exploit the fact that the way Squeeze manages assets and make it as simple as we can. And that's kind of how we designed the, the structure on the inside. We separated all the content from the website itself. So they don't have to go anywhere near the techie stuff. It just looks like a tree of folders to them, which is what they're used to.
Cool. Jason, let's, let's wind up, wind up the questions there. I'd like to say a huge thanks to your presentation and the insights on the redesign. And I'll be really interested to see how you guys build on the success you've had.
Cheers. Cheers.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Now, for those who can stay on another five minutes or so, I'd like to welcome my colleagues, Anisa, Adam and Aang Fantana from our new customer success team. Their team's title is a bit of a spoiler for what's to follow. But having enjoyed working with both of them, I can assure you, they really are here to help. And Anisa, over to you.
Thanks, Pat. Good luck to everyone. I'm just going to be giving you guys a very short introduction to the customer success team, as Pat mentioned, and telling you a little bit about what we do and hopefully how we can help you. So, first slide, Pat. Awesome. So my name's Anisa, as Pat said. I've worked with Squiz for a very long time and most of that luckily was in the New Zealand office. So during that time, I got to meet quite a few of you, some of you will be a familiar face. I was a technical trainer, I also did a lot of UX stuff and I was in a BA role before moving into the customer success team, which I'm now a part of. Those of you who have met me before will know that I'm not lying when I say I have a passion for anything education related, especially when talking is involved. So I've got five minutes, I'm going to try and talk as fast as I can to make sure we don't run over time. And that's the end of the day for you guys. As Pat mentioned, one of my colleagues, Aang, is also on the call. He's our funnelback specialist, has extensive experience with search and despite getting a hard time for it, still thinks that search is cool. Awesome. So the customer success team has been newly formed within Squiz. Our primary purpose or objective is to help all of you, so to help everybody within the Squiz, Squiz family, as we like to think of it, to get the most out of our products. So we're here to help you talk through some of your business objectives, make sure that the way you're using our products is the best way for you and to also help you to learn as much as possible about our range of products. We're a team of about 10 people at the moment and we're across the different regions where Squiz is based. So sort of cover all the time zones. We have a team that's widely, widely experienced. So we have people who have some specialist areas, like Aang, for example, with funnelback. But all of us know the Squiz products really well, we're all passionate about them and we really want you to love them as much as we do. Basically, our sort of remit is to work with customers around the, the out of the box product features. So we're really here to help you understand them as much as possible, be able to use them in the best way. So talking about best practices and so on. When it comes to custom work that may have been done on your site, that's where our services team will still jump in like they always used to and they'll be the ones working on any of those. Next slide. So our sort of focus areas, what are we focused on in terms of our team and what we do? So product help, as I mentioned, giving everybody support around each of our different products. So Squiz Matrix as well as funnelback and the various other products that you may have come across so far. We've got a new one called Connect Data Store, Squiz Workplace, of course. So we cover all of the Squiz product suites. We all love education and training, so really into helping with learning as much as possible as we know that the more you know about our products, the more you're going to be able to get out of them and you're really going to be able to utilize them and maximize what they have to offer. We also can talk with you about business needs. So your particular business, the kinds of things that you want to achieve, be it things like that have come up today, like shared content authorship and so on. And we can talk with you around best practice and how you might be able to utilize our products in the best way to suit your particular needs. Also more specific stuff like product version information and so on. Here are some example questions that you might, oh, sorry, just said, I'm not going to go through them, but example questions of things that you might ask us. Essentially, it's like, how do I use this particular thing? How can I achieve this particular objective? And how can I learn more about whatever it is? Next slide, thank you. So because we love education and training so much, one of the things that we've recently done is we've done a whole bunch of work to get some free interactive e-learning modules out. We launched these at Summit, so in September, a couple of months ago. We came out with a few that cover most of our products. So we've got some introductory stuff around Matrix, Matrix 5, as well as the new version of Matrix, Matrix 6. We've got some stuff around funnelback as well and then some more advanced modules. There's an example of one here about permissions and workflow. You know, as many of you will know, that sort of stuff comes up quite a bit. So we're continually adding to these with more free e-learning modules that you can access. The way to make use of this is on our website, if you go to resources and then training, it'll take you to a page where you can see all the different courses. You can enroll online and just do them in your own time so that all self-paced and there's no charge for any of those. We're going to be launching a whole bunch more next week, so please do jump in and have a look at them. I think a couple of you have done some already, which is great. And send us feedback, we want to know what you think of these, what topics might be useful to you as well because we'll be continuing to, to make these for you. Next slide, awesome. So, how can you reach us? There's two main ways at the moment that you can contact our team in order for us to work with you and, and support you with, with our products. So the first one is Mysqus. So hopefully, most of you will have a Mysqus login or perhaps another one of your colleagues may have one. So that's like our customer portal. You can log in there and you can lodge a ticket. So under the support tab, where you'd normally lodge a ticket for work or any sort of service requests, you can create a ticket and then, and there's a dropdown where you can choose what type of request it is and you'll be able to see there which ones come through to customer success, they're quite clearly marked. So if you put a ticket in and it's, it has that particular category, that will come through to our team and we'll pick it up and then we will converse with you about that and do our very best to help you to, to achieve the outcome that you want. The other way that you can reach us, and this is quite new, is through the Squiz Experience Cloud Console. It's mouthful. Some of you may have seen this, we demoed it at Summit, it's very new. Some of you may have even had early access trials and gone in and checked it out. So basically, this is a console that we've created to consolidate one interface where you can access each of your products. So you log into here and then you can see a link to your Squiz Matrix system, to your funnelback system. If you've got Workplace, Connect and so on. So each of our products can easily link off from there. Oh, I want to show you my Squiz t-shirt. There we go, I have a t-shirt with the logos of each of these products. Why not? And then, so within this console, we have also integrated a little chat tool. So in the bottom right-hand corner, when you get access to it, you will see that there is a little chat tool there and you can click on that and you can send us a message. It's real people, it's actually myself and Aang and the rest of our team there waiting to hear from you. And one of us will pick up your request and then we will have a chat with you, direct you to resources, might have a follow-up conversation on, on Zoom or on Google Hangouts or whatever works well. And yeah, we're really looking forward to being of assistance and getting to meet as many people as we can. I think I did it in five minutes. Over to you, Pat.
Thank you, Anisa. And thanks everyone for coming along. We've, we've reached the, the end of the inaugural meetup. Please do give us your feedback and including any requests to change the slide share. Or slide changer rather. So you, you will receive an email, an email shortly with details about the next, next meetup and a link to the, the feedback form. We appreciate your time and we're really keen to make these meetups as relevant and valuable for you as possible. So Kia ora, everyone, thank you very much for attending and bye-bye.